It is 6:30, so I will call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on August 22nd, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Number four, I have a proclamation to read for welcoming week. Whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all feel welcome here. And whereas today, new residents and visitors alike are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas this week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across Johnson County. And whereas during welcoming week, I invite all of Coralville to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. And whereas by working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from all over the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are Coralville, united in our efforts to build a stronger community, recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and growing economy. We make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas, let us come together to build communities every resident has the opportunity to contribute at her, where every resident has the opportunity to contribute at his or her best. And whereas, let us come together to create more prosperous communities and to reaffirm that Coralville still stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim September 8th through the 17th as welcoming week in Coralville, and call upon all the people of Coralville to join together to build stronger communities in our region. Signed on this 22nd day of August 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. This is awesome. I love it. I love everything about this proclamation. So we have some folks that are here to receive it. Please come, step up to the mic, and tell us a little bit about yourselves.
Hello. My name is Sunday Goshit, and just to say that I'm a proud resident of Coralville. And I'm a part of the welcoming week organizing committee for our communities. Through welcoming week, organizations and communities bring together neighbors of all backgrounds to build strong connections and affirm the importance of welcoming and inclusive places in achieving collective prosperity. This year, welcoming week will be held from September 8th to 17th, 2023, and Coralville will be hosting one of the welcoming week events at the Coralville Public Library for Connected Community Day on September 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. This will be a community resource fair with many opportunities for community members to engage and learn what resources are available and how things work. For more information about welcoming week, please see our social media through Better Together 2030 and the website, welcomeicarea.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to us?
I just also wanted to say hi. I'm Jennifer Banta from United Way of Johnson and Washington Counties. Just want to thank you for this proclamation. It's part of our mission vision to lift people up, and we know that Coralville as the gateway to our community welcomes so many individuals, even on a day like today that's not so welcoming with the weather. You all provide such an amazing environment to welcome a diverse population, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And Katie Gerlach with Better Together 2030. We'd love to get a picture of the council with some of our members.
Oh, we always do photos.
And then just say thank you for, you're the first proclamation in our community, so we're excited to feature that prominently and also just hope that all the community's opportunities and events, you guys will engage with that, but especially the Connected Community Day at the library on the 12th.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. All right, let's get that photo. Wait, if you're not going to do it, that's.
He's a cameraman.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. There you go. Thank you.
Oh, he's gonna take.
A casual shot.
Okay. Item five, community comments. This is a time for members of the community to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual comment time and the over, the individual's comment time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight?
Yep.
Okay, then we will move on to number six. We have a public hearing for Altmeier Acres. This is a rezoning of an 11-acre site for a proposed industrial building to be used for light assembly fabrication and distribution with office space. And we have our community development director Dave Johnson here to give us a report, the community development report, and the planning and zoning report.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. The area immediately surrounding this property is generally characterized by commercial businesses, hotels, as well as restaurants. Immediately west and south of the subject property is Altmeier Family Park. A little bit greater breakdown in those uses. We're looking at about 79,000 square feet total for this building. The site is 11.14 acres. Approximately 33,000 square feet of that will be used for office space, and the remaining space will be used for light assembly fabrication as well as distribution. Building materials consist predominantly of textured precast panels as well as glass. And the city has been requiring the site be developed as a PUD to make sure that the proposed uses as well as design conform with the general character of the area and the immediate vicinity. The development agreement for the site requires that the building also comply with the building and site design requirements set forth in the West Land Use Area Master Plan. Staff has been working closely with the owner, developer, and their design team, and we have, we do find that the building design and site design do comply with the West Land Use Area Master Plan Design Guidelines, so they meet those standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission met and reviewed. This at their August 2nd meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, they recommended approval of the application to rezone the property as well as the site plan, preliminary plat, and final plat. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us?
Lacey Stutzman with MMS Consultants. I'm a part of the design team that Dave just mentioned, and I'm here on behalf of the developer. And I don't know if it's specifically enclosed in there, but this will allow CivCo to kind of centralize both of their, their separate facilities into one here in Coralville, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any, any other comments on this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Altmeier Acres, Coralville, Iowa. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item?
I guess I didn't follow how that, what this has to do with CivCo consolidation?
CivCo.
Consolidating CivCo's two facilities into one.
That's what this building is.
Okay. Any other questions?
The area in front of it will still be commercial.
Those lots are commercial and will remain commercial, so we'll still have that commercial presence along Second Street.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item E, could I have the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2023-1011, an ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the City of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, from C2 Arterio Commercial District to IPUD Industrial Plan Unit Development 2 District. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item F, a resolution approving a development agreement with West Coralville Investments. This agreement requires the developer to construct a $15 million project and have 165 jobs at an average annual salary of $71,000. The city will rebate 100% of the incremental tax revenues received from this project for 15 years. If the assessment is greater than 15 million, the city will keep the additional incremental tax revenue. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a development agreement with West Coralville Investment LLC. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions on this item?
I have a question about salary. Why average instead of median?
What did you say?
Why, why are we using average salary instead of median salary?
I think that's just the average of the, not like, they're not looking at the local average salary. Is that what your question is?
They're, they're, this is how the, we follow how the state does their job programs, so this is, this will be the total, that's what we've done in all these projects over the years.
It's just what the state normally requires, and we've matched their requirements.
Okay. I just worry, you know, if somebody's making 10 million, it's easy to have a $71,000 average. So I'd almost favor median, but if that's what the state does.
You mean that the average median salary for the area?
No.
Or?
No, it's this agreement.
Okay.
He's saying if there's CEO makes 2 million and there's, you know, 30, 150 make 20,000, you know.
Yeah, okay.
But we are, but like you said, like.
We want the median salary to be 71,000, I would think.
Like I said, we, we have just followed the state programs. This is what the state requires from their companies when they do agreements also.
Okay. And I hear that, I, I hear, I, I get what you're saying, but I think these are still really good paying jobs, you know. It's, these are, these are gonna be jobs that'll pay more than a living wage and, yeah.
Is there language like for salary minimums, or is it just average and that's it?
It's just the average total. But we could do that in the future, too. I think that would be probably the best thing.
That's what I'm saying, if you did minimum salary.
At minimum salary level, which I don't think any of the companies.
Full-time, it'd be a full-time minimum.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which I don't think that any of the companies that we've ever dealt with would have concern about that.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number seven, Lot 2 Jacobs Clear Creek 3rd subdivision. We have a public hearing on this item. This is a rezoning for a proposed four-story hotel. And we have Dave Johnson here again with us to give us the Community Development Department report and the Planning and Zoning Commission report.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this property is designated as regional commercial on our land use plan, or our community plan land use map. Regional commercial areas are intended to accommodate larger shopping areas and developments that serve a more regional function. They draw on a customer base that extends beyond our city limits, and these areas are designated for regional commercial, typically located off of major arterials and consolidated along heavily traveled corridors in our community. This will allow for a 12,000-square-foot hotel on 2.43 acres. This is a PUD, and the development agreement for this site will require the building comply with the building and site design requirements in the West Land Use Area Plan as well. There's going to be 112 rooms in this hotel. You had noted this is four stories. It will be predominantly brick, stone, veneer, engineered wood siding, and glass. Staff has reviewed the site design and building design and finds that it conforms with requirements set forth in the West Land Use Area Master Plan, and the rezoning can be considered consistent with the regional commercial land use designation in the Coralville Community Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their August 2nd meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, the commission recommended approval of the application to rezone Jacobs Clear Creek 3rd subdivision Lot 2 from the C2 Arterio Commercial District to the CPUD 2 Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District as well as the site plan. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone that would like to talk to us about this?
Good evening. John Martin with MMS Consultants, representing the developer. I don't have anything to add to Dave's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us on this? Did we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1012, an ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the City of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2 Jacobs Clear Creek 3rd subdivision from C2 Arterio Commercial District to CPUD 2 Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or discussion?
I was a little surprised this was in the West Land Use Area. I thought that kind of started at 965.
It's not actually technically in the West Land Use Area. It's a PUD. All of our planned unit development projects have elevated site and building design criteria separate from what our basic zoning standards do. So the West Land Use Area Master Plan, as well as those guidelines, serve as a good basis for people to design as they best illustrate what the expectation is of a planned unit development.
I got it. Great. Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Number eight, Iowa River Landing retail lease. We have a public hearing on this item. The owners of Hokkaido Coralville wish to enter into a five-year lease agreement with two five-year options to renew for 201 East 9th Street in the Iowa River Landing District. Alternate proposals were due August 21st, 2023. I'll now open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposition of property and approving a lease agreement with Hokkaido Coralville Inc., DBA Hokkaido Ramen House. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments?
Yeah, just to report that this tenant would be going into, the address is the former Fuzzy's Taco location, and they intend to open by the end of the year, and Fuzzy's Tacos continues to pay the rent until the new tenant takes over, so there's no loss of income during that time period. And it's a, looks like it's a very, very popular restaurant. They have several across the country, and the owner is actually out of Montana.
Are they in Iowa?
I do not believe so.
Great.
Sit down, or, or, I didn't know.
Yes, yes, sit down, and it'll also have a small bar as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item nine, speed zones amendment. This will add special speed zones in the areas of First Avenue, North Liberty Road Northeast, Dubuque Street Northeast, and Rustic Ridge Road Northeast. The council approved collapsing the second and third readings of this ordinance at the August 8th, 2023 council meeting. So could I have the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1010, an ordinance amending Section 63.01 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Coralville, establishing special speed zones. This ordinance introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments?
Thanks for your quick work.
Yes. Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item B, could I have that ordinance?
Ordinance number 2023-1010, an ordinance amending Section 63.01 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Coralville, establishing special speed zones. This ordinance entered for consideration, third and final consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final thoughts? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item 10, Hyatt Regency Coralville Hotel and Conference Center renovations. This increase in the draw loan is not to exceed the construction cost budget, including closing costs and capitalized interest for the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center renovations. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $5 million credit agreement anticipation notes and execution of related documents. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, this will finish the, provide the financing for finishing the renovations of the hotel. This will include the restaurant, coffee shop, bar, and public spaces on the first floor. The hotel tower is completed, and so all of that work is, is done. The fitness center is completed, moved and expanded, and the pool is completed as well. So this will be, and about three years ago, we did all of the meeting space, so this will be the last piece of the puzzle as far as the hotel and conference center.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments?
You said and conference center. That hasn't been updated in quite some time, has it?
Yeah, all of that space was done three years ago.
The whole conference center?
Yep. All of the meeting space. It, it had the same colors as the rest of the hotel, the reds and golds, and now are, match the rest of the building.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, sewer revenue bonds. This is to utilize sewer revenue bonds to finance the costs of planning, designing, and construction improvements and extension to the sewer system, including the West Land Use Area Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing and approving a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the sale and issuance of sewer revenue bond Series 2023. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments?
Just remind everyone, this is a federal program that passes down through the state and provides extremely low financing and also provides no-cost financing during the whole design process. So the design work and all of that, they loan us the money, but we don't have to start paying the interest until the project is completed. So it's a very good federal program. I think most is it's still about 2 point some odd percent is the construction loan, so extremely low. The other thing that they still also do is a rebate of a certain part of the interest that we'll pay comes back, and we can do other public environmental programs throughout the city. That's where we've used funds in the past to buy land in the Colony Park area and do some stormwater improvements. So that is also a benefit of this program as well.
That's awesome. Anything else? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, turf and horticulture contracts. This is a three-month contract for turf care and mowing, horticulture, and tree care for Coral Ridge Avenue, Highway 6, Iowa River Landing non-CAM, Iowa River Landing North CAM, and Iowa River Landing South CAM. And we will start by having a quotation report from Parks and Rec Director Sherry Proud.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a mutual dissolution of contract of the company that was providing these services, so we went out to bid with, for a temporary three-month contract, little over three months, with two companies that had held the contract before, Quality Care and Greg's Lawn and Landscape. And those were submitted for us, and the winning bid, or the one we're recommending, is for $193,937.50. And that would take place, start on August 28th and run through November 30th of 2023. Currently, our park staff is doing these areas, and they will pick up the December month also, which is mostly trash removal from garbage cans and picking up trash, and we will work on a plan for 2024.
Great.
Who had the low bid, Sharon?
Low bid is Quality Care.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting quotes and awarding the turf and horticultural temporary contract. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any other questions?
About a third of it, I think, Sherry, is covered by the Iowa River Landing CAM or the fees that the businesses in that area pay to maintain their area. So that is covered in this, and we're looking at splitting those in the future and have them do their own separate bid from the city contract.
How does this compare to what Future Scape had originally agreed to?
It was significantly over, I suppose. And that was part of the problem.
That was part of, I was gonna say that they were significantly.
They underbid it?
Under, yeah, and could not keep up with the contract with what they were trying to do.
Both of the other contractors this time and the original bids were very close, and the one that got it was extremely low, much lower than the other two. So you always, I mean, in all the contracts, we always worry about that when there's that big a disparity, and that's what happened in this case.
Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, Parks and Rec Professional Services Agreement. This agreement is for preparing a master plan for a park in the West Land Use Area of Coralville consisting of 60 acres.
Confluence before?
Yes, so the reason we selected this company was that they in 2016 completed the West Land Use Plan. And a lot of this planning in terms of how this park lays out is already done in that West Land Use Plan. So this is kind of putting the icing on the cake and flushing out what those facilities will look like and how it all comes together.
Anything else?
Well, and you did it specifically in this order so that you could get into the areas by doing that.
Yes, so this has been delayed a little bit. One, we wrapped all of our REAP grants together and the SRF purchase together. And so that delayed it a little bit in terms of timing of purchase of land. And then second, the Timber Stand Improvement Project really needed to happen first. And that happened over the winter in order for us to really get in and see the beauty of what is there. And that happened winter into spring. And so now you can walk this land and you can get through it without having to crawl through thickets and thorns and things like that.
Anything else? All right, roll call.
Councilmember, Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B, we have a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Confluence for a city facility's signed design plan. This agreement is for updating identification signage for city-owned facilities and is not to exceed $23,468. Could I have that resolution?
Resolution approving a professional design services Confluence for the city facility's signed design plan. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. I just want to clarify for everyone and for those that are watching that this is not like a rebranding or a changing of the city's visual identity. It's just the signs that we're looking at, just maybe refreshing some of those monument signs that are in front of our facilities.
Yeah, the current signage is 30 years old. And many of them have been ground down and repainted and resurfaced at least once, if not twice. And really are at the end of their aesthetic life, let's say. So it's really time for us to take a look at putting some new signage in. And this will give an opportunity to take our brand and place it out there in a new way.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 14, Well 15 Improvements. This project drilled a permanent well 15, but it was abandoned before installing permanent pumps and controls after testing showed it only produced 100 gallons per minute instead of the expected 400 to 500 gallons per minute. Pay estimate number five final for $6,726 is the total owed for the retainage and will be paid 30 days after its approval. I would entertain a motion to approve this pay estimate five final.
So moved.
Moved by Gross, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the well number 15 improvements as completed. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 15, Public Records Fees and Policy. This resolution will replace resolution number 97-317, which was adopted on October 14, 1997, and is outdated and does not take into account amendments made to section 22.3 of the Code of Iowa by the state legislature. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving updates to fees and policies for examination of public records performed by the city. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 16, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to T.
Moved by Winn, second?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 17, City Administrators Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just first of all, this Friday at 10 o'clock a.m., the Iowa Department of Transportation will be having their ribbon cutting for the Interstate 380-80 project. And that's exciting to have that happening because it is many years prior or earlier than what was originally planned for. Because originally, when this all started, it was a 2027 completion date. And things have happened during that time. And to shorten that timeframe, and so I think the Iowa DOT is to be congratulated on their management of the project because we've really had a lot less problems than I expected. You know, they did a lot of work in both North Liberty and Correville on alternate routes and all that kind of work, and they've used it very few times, but not near what we had originally thought was going to happen. So all the work that they have left complete is off of the main thoroughfare. So you'll be able to continue to go through those areas without disruption for the work that they have left. And with this project coming to this point, we also have the Clear Creek Trail open. And I hope everybody gets a chance to go out and try that section because now the two sections under the bridge were the last pieces of the puzzle. And so you can go from downtown Iowa City through Correville, through Tiffin, out into Johnson County. And it's really a beautiful, beautiful trail. And it's amazing how quickly the numbers have already spiked on users for that area. So just encourage people, before it gets too cold, go out and try that area or maybe after it's too hot, I don't know. But it is just a beautiful trail and encourage people to go out and make use of that. And then the last thing, next week, our RagBri Organizational Committee in Correville will be meeting with the organizers of the state, from the state RagBri, to go through and just make references and comments and thoughts that everybody has on the process. Encourage anybody in the community or council to get ahold of somebody from the RagBri Committee if you have things that you think should be thought about for the future. They're looking to always improve the process for the communities as well as for the riders. And so if people have ideas, we'd love to have those and pass them on to them. We've got some really good stories that have happened because of the RagBri visit. And for example, just yesterday, we got a note from the Houses to Homes Organization. And they took up a group of 30 riders. They provided housing in their facility for riders. And the riders were so appreciative of what they were doing and for being hosts that they sent them a check for $5,000. So that was just one way that they contributed back to them. And also, the Pork Bellies Organization, they were a large group that were down on the Iowa River. And the arena provided them several opportunities to do things that they'd never been able to do before in hosting all of their riders. But they were also extremely appreciative of how the reaction and timeframe of helping the riders during the storm. And so in thanks for that as well, they sent an extra check for $5,000 to the committee for that work. So the efforts that people are putting in, that did put in around the community are being recognized. And we've got a lot of really good comments back from riders thanking the community and organizations for what they did. So, thank you.
That's great, thank you for that.
Mayor, can I ask Kelly a question on that?
Sure.
Were, with the weather things, were there insurance policies that would have covered for acts of God or things like that?
We had a one for the concert. Unfortunately, the work, or the storms, it's a rain policy, basically. That's the only thing you can cover is if, because you can measure that. The rain didn't happen until after the policy was concluded because all the rain happened well after nine o'clock. So we weren't able to collect off of that insurance policy. And we've played with that over the years of when you should, the timeframes, because obviously the longer the timeframe or the lower amount of rain that you have, the policy goes up.
Right.
And from advice of organizers of these kind of events, they say you should move it up earlier rather than later. Well, this time it bit us in the butt because we weren't able to collect.
But do we pay, like for Bush or is that the RagBri?
They, that was an addition this year that RagBri covered all of the costs of the concert. So that was an addition. So they gave us $15,000 to help pay organizational expenses. They also, all of the riders could contribute to a GoFundMe page for all of the overnight communities. And we collected, our share of that was a little over $7,000. In addition to those two things, they did cover all of the expenses for the concert. So the band, stage, the VIP things that they had there, all of that was at their expense. So that was a huge contribution. And I looked it up when we were starting that process, the budget, the last time we hosted RagBri, and we had to pay all those expenses, were over $80,000 just for that one item. So obviously, that was a huge help.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, because I thought we did that last time.
Yeah, we did, all the times prior. This is the first year that they decided to take that. I think part of it was because of the 50th that they want. But the other thing was to recognize that it is a huge expense for communities to, number one, organize it, but then also pay those costs. So that was a new addition that RagBri covered.
Did they raise their fees to cover that?
Not significantly, it was $160, I believe, was that right, Sherri? Was it 160 or 200? 160, I think. Yeah, it, there was a sliding scale. The earlier you register, the cheaper it is. And it goes up. I think actually, if you did the week of, you could still do a whole week, but it was up to 300 and some dollars at that point. So it's a sliding scale. So no, they didn't increase it significantly. They're working hard on getting larger sponsors. They call them Friends of RagBri that pay a significant portion of their expenses. We will have our final balancing of the budget within the next week to two weeks. But we do know from having most of the expenses paid that we will have a positive balance. So that's really good news. And, you know, another thing that, I already sent a note to them, but just want to recognize publicly, the Iowa City School District, if it wouldn't have been for their assistance, we could never host it because we use Northwest, we use Kirkwood, we use Correville Central, we use their grounds. But the last few years, they've also enabled us to use their buildings as an emergency. And if we wouldn't have those buildings, we wouldn't obviously be able to provide a safe environment for everybody. And we actually, in all three, I don't know about Kirkwood, but Northwest and Correville Central, all ended up with people sleeping overnight because their things got wet or some of their tents blew away. So obviously, that whole emergency plan is not something you want to, it's not a lot of fun spending time on, but obviously, it worked.
Very grateful that we had it.
Yeah.
You know, and very grateful that we had the facilities adjacent to the campgrounds, we had that access. You know, I keep saying, we never want to see a storm, we never want to see a concert get canceled, obviously. But if it was going to happen anywhere, I am glad actually that it happened here because of all of the spaces we had. And I knew that the plan that we had was solid. And we'd be able to get everybody in and keep everybody safe.
So the school district not only provided the buildings, but they had a staff member already in each of the buildings so that if it did need to be unlocked, you didn't have to call somebody and wait for them to get there. So there was already somebody stationed in every building, plus and obviously our city buildings. So that allowed us to have an extremely quick response.
Great. Thank you for that update and really proud of the efforts of our city staff, our volunteers, and just the community in general in making RagBri as successful as it was.
Yeah, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Another part that of this is there were homestays. And many people who thought they were going to camp on someone's lawn ended up in their basements or in their storerooms or whatever for a safe night's sleep. And I'd just like to thank all the residents who offered their homes.
Absolutely, yes, fantastic, thank you. All right, Mayor's Report, I don't have a lot this evening, just a couple of quick things. First, I want to say welcome back to the students. At the university, classes started yesterday. Yesterday was my first day of school. I went back to, into the classroom and was really great to, you know, see those students ready to start a new semester at the University of Iowa. Also, wanted to just remind folks, tomorrow is the first day of school for our students in the Iowa City Community School District. Please be careful and mindful as you're out driving. You know, be on the lookout for kids walking to and from school, be on the lookout for kids on their bikes. And just hope everybody has a wonderful and safe school year. With the excessive heat, just wanted to note that there are some places that you can, places where you can go to cool down. Here with the city city facilities, you can go to the library, the rec center. I believe the pool is closed, the aquatic center pool is closed. But the indoor pool at the rec center is available if people want to swim?
Check the schedule, check the schedule.
Check the schedule online to see if that pool at the rec center is available. And then I just wanted to note that September 1st, we have Fry Fest coming up. Really fun event kickoff to the Hawkeye football season in the Iowa River Landing. We have the big trade show, lots of other great activities going on. And Kelly, I believe you mentioned yesterday, they're still looking for volunteers for that event.
Yeah, they are still looking for volunteers. And one that they especially need is for all the kids' activities and just being there and helping with those, the blowups and those kinds of things. Each one are required to have an adult present. And so that's one that they really need so that they can continue to offer that.
Great. Sounds like a lot of fun. And that is all I have.
And if you volunteer, Keith, you can be the first one to use the bouncy castle.
Oh, hey!
No, now, hey! I want to be the first one to use the bouncy castle, just kidding. You can, Keith, if it really means that much to you, all right. City Attorneys Report.
I have nothing, Don, continuing to recover at home from minor medical procedure. So hopefully, we'll see him back here next time.
Awesome, thank you. Committee and council members report, we'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to reiterate what Kelly said about that trail. I did get a chance to get out and ride it. Thank you, Sherri, for getting that done so quickly. It is a very beautiful trail. Can't wait till they can get it finished out to Kent Park. That's probably a few years down the road, but it would be a great ride. One comment, along there, I think about the Mobile Home Park, you know, along Highway 6 there and how they could access it. And if there's any opportunities to somehow connect that trail to West Core Drive along the way, it looked like, I don't know if there's, you know, we'd have to look for a spot to do that. But, you know, there's really no safe way for those folks to access the trail.
There will be a trail on actually both sides of the park that will connect down to the south. We've got the green space on the east and there's a green space on the west that will both have trails adjacent to the park that will go to the south.
Which park is this then?
The, there's green spaces that'll be right next to the Western Hills Mobile Home Park. So on both sides of that area, there's some green space. And they both have paralleling trails that connect and that'll go across to West Core Drive. And then West Core does have, is it two, yeah, two connections down to the trail off of West Core.
Oh, that is already planned.
That is already, we've got the easements in for that, so.
Fantastic, I wasn't clear on that.
That will be all connected in here shortly.
Kelly, when you say the park, are you referring to the park?
Mobile Home Park.
Oh, the Mobile Home Park, gotcha, okay.
And then the areas, I would call them more of a green space than a formal park because they are open space, but not a designated park.
Thank you for that, and that's all I have.
All right, Councilmember Gross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have, I think Iowa City CVB Board Meeting last week. And just a couple of things to report. Just want to talk about its impact on our city right now. Actually, CVB staff is in Minneapolis along with Hyatt staff trying to just always brainstorming ways to bring bigger conventions to the area, which obviously has a huge economic impact to the area. And you mentioned for Fry Fest, you know, the theme is Herky, it's Herky's birthday. And it's going to be a very, very special announcement made at that date. I don't know if it's embargoed or not, I can't remember when we were told at the meeting.
Oh, if it's embargoed?
It is, okay. So I'm not going to spill the beans, but it will have a pretty cool impact even of Correville, so.
Oh.
Yeah. So there's my tease, to enter Fry Fest.
You're killing us.
Okay, yeah, no, we can't tell you.
I could tell you, Mike, but then ye.
No!
Don't do that.
All right.
That's all I have, I'll leave it on that one, on the cliffhanger.
Okay, yes, to be continued. Cliffhanger, I love cliffhangers. All right, Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind the community that the community cookbook is still taking recipe and story. Please submit. We have a little less than two weeks to get that cookbook going. We're really hoping to get that done so that we can have it at the celebration for October 1st. So please submit your recipe and story. It's pretty short, it's less than a, well, it's a page and a half. So I would encourage council and staff, please get on that wagon as well, sooner the better.
What recipe did you provide?
I have a couple, I just need to submit them. Houses into Home, again, they are a wonderful local organization that do a lot of good work, not only in Correville, but also in throughout Johnson County as well. And so if you have things, especially, I mean, it's still so hot now, we can't even think about a fall yet. But fall will come soon and we'll have, you know, fall cleanup. So keep them in mind. They need a lot of smaller home appliances, microwave is always, always in need. Pillow, because of sanitary reason, they cannot give out used pillow. So they are always in need of new pillow. Same with mattresses, twin and four mattresses is always, always in need. Smaller side table, smaller couches, thing like that. So please keep them in mind if you clear out your house. They have their second annual fundraiser. It's called Comfort Food Cook-Cook Off. It's going to take place on October 1st from 2:00 to 5:00 at Green State in North Liberty. So sign up to be either a chef, a volunteer, or just a supporter. Last year, I contribute a soup and, you know, just 200 small bite. You don't have to cook for a crowd of 700, just, you know, small bite. So it's very manageable. But it's a great way to support a local organization who are doing good work in our community. The pantry will be closed for Labor Day, which is a Saturday on September 2nd. And so please make sure that if you need food, before then, come to us since I know that we are very busy on Saturday. So plan ahead, plan accordingly. We do delivery, so if you need food before then, just reach out. And then I do have a question regarding the archery park. There are, when folks look up to where to go, it's still listed at Almeyer Family Park? And so people get lost? So if there's any way that we can update it on our website, on anywhere?
I checked all the website stuff and all the website stuff's correct. It's not on Almeyer and it is on, it is under archery range.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're like, they're not clearing their cache on their search?
That could be it.
Or what it is, but somebody else brought that up like a week ago and I checked it all and should be sending them to that.
Okay, okay. And then someone asked why, why is there the time from 1:00 p.m. to dusk? Instead of just, they were just wondering why. Is it 11, no, 11:00 a.m. to dusk?
It used to be 11:00 a.m. at the old location because they blasted in the mornings.
Okay.
So that park lies within blasting zone of the quarry.
So this one will just open whenever it's open or is there a time on it?
This one, I believe, is out of blasting zone. So we'll be able to open it at daylight.
If we can update the sign, I think the signage right at the gate said differently?
Yeah.
That'd be great, yeah. I just had people ask questions, so I said, okay, I'll make sure I ask a question. And then I think that's all I have.
Fantastic. And just, I wanted to note, didn't you win an award last year for your soup at the Houses into Homes thing? Like you were voted the most popular soup, right?
I did got first in soup and then also first overall.
There we go, put that in the cookbook.
So that recipe will be in the cookbook, yes.
All right.
Great, I really want to compete against you now at the next one.
You know, you never know, you might be lucky this year. Actually, I do have one more question, Mayor. Speaking of Western Hill, is there any news on the development that we heard not too long ago for the expansion of the park?
I don't, let's see, Dave's gone. I, they had, did all the things that are necessary, but they have not moved forward with it.
We're just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
They had to put a second entrance in and?
They had to put a second entrance in, they have to do some improvements to the water system and make connections there. And there's some park improvements and they need to work on their shelter. But they, so the road is in, actually. They just need to move the mobile homes that are at the end of that street. But we have not heard from them since they got all that approved.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember Jones?
I'll be very quick, I don't, I'm not going to repeat things that have been said. I was, I appreciate you bringing up the reminder that school, that public schools and private schools start tomorrow. I would just add to that my pitch about school buses. In addition to watching for the kids, keep an eye out for the school buses. It is unlawful to pass a stop school bus, at least one that has red lights and the stop arm out. So keep an eye out, the buses will be on the road. And we have a lot of, a lot of students in Correville that are picked up by buses. So keep an eye out for the students and the buses starting tomorrow. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Goodrich?
Thank you, I wanted to mention that the Correville Library had another used book sale in August, and they had 625 patrons and raised over $5,000. So we thank those volunteers at the Friends of the Library. We have two more events for our sesquicentennial, Correville 150. In September, there will be Cemetery Walk, and that will be on September 10. Write it on your calendar, you can, the tours will be from 3:00 or 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. So we look forward to hearing again about the history of Correville as we look at people who are buried in the cemetery. It's a very interesting and fun time, there's refreshments also, that's always important. And then write on your calendar, October 1st, 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock will be the official, exciting event of celebrating our sesquicentennial, October 1st, 1:00 to 4:00. And that will be at the arena, thank you.
Awesome, thank you for that update. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Winn?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.